I would like to call the January meeting of the Rockland Economic College Trustees Award. The time is 6:00. I am Secretary of the Board.
Mr. Ward-Pitt.
Here.
Mr. Rand. Ms. Dillon is here. Ms. Dykstra, Ms. Allen. Ms. Hughes. Ms. Decker. Mr. Lewis.
Yeah.
Ms. Brownos. Ms. Stew. Mr. Tab.
Here.
Mr. Valentine.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Here.
Excellent. Thank you. Cliff, can you go right through the President's?
Thank you very much. And what I want to do first is share a video with the board that I, I wish I could say I created. Our wonderful multimedia center did it. When I was trying to think about something for the college convocation, which was yesterday, I was trying to figure out how to present information, and I just don't do powerpoints very well at all. I can't pause and click at the same time. And then also about that same time, I sat down with Don and we talked about the theme of this year's luncheon, and he really wanted to do something where it related to our economic development activities. So I was seeing them yesterday, telling him, you know, I like pop culture, and I was hearing an interview the other day with Jennifer Lopez, who was talking about she had the best lamb squad in the business. So I thought, well, if I'm going to spruce up my presentation for the faculty and then for the foundation, I need to get some people in. So I brought together Janice Gold, senior director of multimedia center, Ali Makayor-Kane, who teaches graphics, who did my holiday cards, by the way. Her students did them under her supervision, which I was really happy with, and Beth Robinson and Zatour Reitman. And we kind of sat down, and I said, you know, I kind of want to show how we're moving out into the county and expanding our sphere of influence, if you will. And we talked through it a little bit, and then they came back with this wonderful presentation, which I'm very pleased about, and which I will be showing at the luncheon on April the 1st. And the other thing, I think, if you haven't seen your email, is when I talked to one of the legislators, we had four legislators, he said, you know, you really need to set the rest of legislators need to see this. So I contacted all of them, Will's office, and he said, why don't I show it on Tuesday, February the 2nd, right before the legislature starts at 6 o'clock? So I sent you a note, you're all welcome to be there, and we will be there showing this video. And this young man, Michael Garcia, right here, was also part of the creative team that put this together. I know he was responsible for a lot of very creative animation. So I think you're really going to enjoy this, and it's just under five minutes. And it would take me 30 minutes to sell this.
Deep Roots in the Center of Rockland County. Rockland Community College has branched out to every corner of Rockland to serve the educational, cultural, and business needs of our diverse community. RCC enriches the lives of all our residents, from infants and toddlers all the way up to senior citizens and everyone in between, serving over 10,000 credit and non-credit students in locations throughout Rockland. At the core of RCC's mission are 50 associate degrees and certificates, with courses at our main campus in Suffolk, at the Havestra Center, and at the new exciting multimillion-dollar automotive technology center in Orangeburg in partnership with Snap-on Tools. At our university center, partnerships with four-year colleges enable students to earn bachelor's and advanced degrees right on RCC's campus. Rockland Community College was a founding member of the Hudson Valley Educational Consortium, which now includes Duchess, Orange, Rockland, Sullivan, Ulster, and Westchester, offering collaborative degree programs in emergency management, fire science, cybersecurity, and green building maintenance, and coming soon is public health. The consortium has also taken on a regional collaborative effort in establishing partnerships with local businesses and workforce development. RCC is now certified as the regional testing center for the high school equivalency test, offering testing in Havestra and on our main campus, as well as offering test preparation at Bosse's in Nyack and Spring Valley. RCC also offers college-level courses in a wide range of subjects in public and private high schools throughout the county, enabling high school students to get a head start on college. Participating high schools include Albertus Magnus, Basakov, Rockland Bosse's, Nyack, North Rockland, Pearl River, Ramapo, and Spring Valley High Schools. RCC also participates with PTAC, Pathways and Technology Early College High School, and is a proud partner with New York State, Bosse's, Rockland and Westchester School Districts, along with business partners, to both educate students in STEM areas, as well as to prepare them to enter the business world. RCC is at the core of the community, serving preschoolers in the Teresa Simmons Center for children and families, children in the RCC summer camps, and seniors in the Retire Senior Volunteer Program and Senior Citizens Club. Cultural offerings include a full schedule of art exhibits and performances, as well as exhibits and lectures at the Holocaust Museum and Center for Tolerance and Education. RCC serves as the economic engine of our region, supporting career preparation and workforce development. Both the Rockland County Career Center and the Small Business Development Center operate at both our main campus and Havestra Center. The 3D Printing Smart Lab at the Havestra Center offers free services to businesses seeking a proof of concept center to help translate ideas into marketable products. The Business Innovation Mall in Havestra offers a wide range of services. Thanks to a significant recent partnership with Startup New York, RCC has expanded into Nyack with the opening of a startup New York affiliated company, York Analytical Laboratories in Nyack, New York. Rockland Community College is building dynamic educational and professional pathways to the future. Plans are underway for a 300-bed residence hall and fitness center, which will expand the college's ability to serve a global student body. RCC continues to explore the development of a biotech innovation center with IRG, the company that purchased the Pfizer site in Pearl River. RCC is continuously forging new relationships with business, government, and educational entities that will improve and enhance the lives of our community. RCC is where you are, ready for the future.
And we get updated, and I think it really does for people who are not aware, the college has really given a good scope of what we're doing. We are in full operation in Havestra with our Rockland Career Center, and within the next two weeks, we're just waiting for the furniture downstairs, the Department of Labor is all set. And so the Department of Labor and the Empire State Development Office and the Rockland County Executives Office are very pleased in how we've been able to pull that together. And I wish Tom Geller were here to thank him and a couple of other people in this county that really made that happen, and we're very pleased about that. And we can already see the results of the students, people are coming in for their services that are there. And the other thing that I'm really excited about, I think, as you know, I was very disappointed when we didn't get the funding for our biotech innovation center, but I think I told you on the day those awards were announced, I got a call from Megan Taylor, and she is the Director of the Empire State Development Corporation, which is the Governor's Office for Economic Development that's responsible for the Mid-Hudson region, of which we are a part. And she said, don't say never yet, Cliff, we want to try to help you find some money because there are people who really want to get this done. So she came to visit with me, we had a conversation yesterday. I also talked to Leslie Watley, who is the Governor's person responsible for Startup New York, and a couple of other people. And IRG is still very committed to giving us this $300,000 a year gift for 10 years of office space, security, facilities, maintenance, the whole thing. We've been able to reshape the scope of our project from three locations to the one location at which we did the Pfizer site. And I do think I'm going to be meeting next week with John Sartino, who is the person in charge of the Pfizer Research and Development Center, which is staying with about 900 employees in Pearl River. He's very interested in the project, and he said he might be able to help with some funding. And also, I may even be able to get some funding from IRG, because one of the things that I had the opportunity to took the time to explore today is, and I wish this was Tom's idea, and I think Leslie Watley really liked it, we can have up to 200,000 square feet of space approved for RCC Startup New York. So Tom's concept is that we, and we're working on our second company right now, as I told you, and we'll be announcing this relationship with this hopefully micro very very soon. We're close to getting that application completed, they're very excited. But the other thing is that we work with IRG, and I'm going to have a conference call with them early in the week, and then IRG apply for 100,000 square feet of startup as a startup New York, which means that the name would have that as leverage to market, and this is really good for Rockland County region. They know that they're going to have a hard time ever finding any businesses as big as Pfizer to come there. So they've got to find smaller, but they're looking, remember, for pharmaceuticals, research and development. If they could say to five international businessmen, okay, you come here, we can put you as a startup New York business here, and they would already have the advantages that that startup New York business brings, which is that they do not pay New York State taxes for 10 years, or if they didn't have a lot of resources, that they could start at our biotech innovation center for a year. And that center, people come in and they all have to pay, but they pay a certain amount, and they can only be in the center with the center for two years. And then the other thing would be if we can get the IDA to approve this as a pilot project, which means that they would get the Pfizer, the IRG, and Orange Town would not lose any revenue, it would just stay stable for the period of time. So I talked to Eric Rannell today, who's the chair of the IDA board, and he wants me to speak for it, but they're very interested, because a lot of people involved in economic development in Rockland County are very committed that IRG be successful, and that they get as many businesses in there as possible, as soon as possible. And this would be a great boon to them, and it would be a huge boon to the college.
Could you just remind everybody what IRG is?
IRG is an international company that's major headquarters are in Ohio, in Cincinnati, Ohio. I think they're probably worldwide, a Dutch company, and they own a billion amount of square footage across around the world. Their specialty are to go into places and retool them or refabricate them, if you will, especially if there are issues. They've done army bases, they've done old car manufacturing places, that is their specialty, to go in, they're very committed to restoring the environment, they're a very well-respected firm, and they're managed by a realty company that's in Morris County, New Jersey, whose name is Gaby, and I'm working also with that person. They're very interested. They see this biotech innovation center as really being a way to help them market the property, and I think the people at the Rockland Economic Development Corporation, they see this, and certainly the RBA. So we've got a lot of support to do this. I also then will be visiting the next, when I go to Albany, I think it's on February 8th or 9th, with the Provost of the University, Alexander Carr, who was doing the research foundation, to be sure that they're in line, he continues to be very interested. And I think that even Southern Brook University is willing to put some money in to help run the center, because they would like to have a presence on this side of the river, because there's space down on the other side of the river. So it has enormous possibilities, and I think it really, within this semester, we might really be able to see it happen. Like I said, this is much bigger than college, this is really for the region. And as you know, we'll be there with the, our Mid-Hudson Regional Economic Development, Hudson Valley Educational Consortium. So, and the good news for them is they're worried about a trained labor force, they won't just be able to get students from Rockland, they will be able to get students from the region, because we might never be able to provide the number of workers that they need if this operation really grows. And these are going to be good jobs and livable wage jobs and that sort of thing. So I'll be very excited. I kept saying I thought it was a charm, and I was going to give it up, but I'm going to try one more time, parthead it, I guess. But there is a lot of support for it, and I'm very excited about the possibilities, as I said, for Rockland, because if Rockland doesn't do better, we're not going to do better, because the county, with all due respect, has really not been able to provide the kind of resources that we know that we need related to facilities, and they kept us very flat. So they don't have the money, it's not a criticism, it's just a fact. So I'm very excited about that, and we will look forward. The other thing that I would just mention to the board.
IDA.
IDA is the development, IDA, my, I've lost what it is.
Industrial Development.
It's Industrial Development Authority, so they are responsible for helping bring, providing financial incentives for people to develop businesses in this area. There's statewide IDAs, and that's not the title, but I'll find it for you. And ours is one of the few that doesn't actually take any money from the county, they really are self-supporting, and they have the capacity to try to help. For instance, they will bring together, as when we, when we were expanding in Havestra, and the way that we could afford to do that is if we didn't have to double the amount of taxes that we were paying. So we got IDA to approve us as a pilot project, and we, IDA has a meeting, they brought in the superintendent schools, the county supervisor, and the mayor, and those three are the ones, because it affects their taxes, who get to approve. It comes down to the local level, but the IDA is trying to broker and help groups communicate, show what the advantage is to provide incentives to businesses.
Thanks.
And it's about a five-member board, and it is, Eric Rannell is the chair, Aaron Howard Hellman is on that board, Mrs. Zuckerby, Anne Peggy, 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 Peggy Zuckerby, and there's one other person, do you remember? Steve. Steve Porat is the employee, but there's another appointed board member, and I can't, I can't think of who he is, he's new, anyway. And so that's who they are. The only other thing that I, real quickly, is to tell you, we do have two new employees since the last board met. We now have a new coordinator of student activities, who replaces John Mara, who retired last year, her name is Anne Gill. And we have, as you know, we have a new federal program, a trio grant, which I know Mrs. Everett is very excited about, had back at North Rockland High School. We have a young man named Willie Everett, and so we welcome them both, and we have a number of qualified applicants, and those were the two who were selected. You all know that Mrs. Dillon expressed concern about, or brought to your attention the concern that the New York Community College Trustees Association had over the new regional councils that the governor mandated through last year's, or this current year's budget, and the chancellor was assigned establishing those councils. She has now set up the guidelines for those councils, and the concern expressed by NICE, which was to have a trustee representative was included in the chancellor's recommendation, and she asked that we remind our boards that within the next month, they need to not, you need to nominate one of your members to represent Rockland Community College on those regional economic development councils. I would anticipate they would not meet more than two or three times a year. They're very large groups, because they have student representatives, they have faculty representatives, they have presidents. Each of the regional councils will be chaired by one of the presidents. And one of the good things for us is, which is really the advantage of our Hudson Valley Educational Consortium, our region is exactly as the governor's Mid-Hudson Regional Economic Development Council. She made a few changes because of concerns in some of the colleges in North had about where they were located, who they really worked with, and so we also have to come up the presidents with a plan, but we have our plan. Our regional plan is our strategic plan for the Hudson Valley Educational Consortium, of what we need to do, because these are designed to support business in industry, which is one of the new goals of the Hudson Valley Educational Consortium, and work collaborative in private programs and services. So we really, the work of our council will be to help manage that, so all of, we're very pleased about that, and the chancellor did mention that as a model. So that is my report, unless there are questions about any specific thing that I talked about. We had a very good startup yesterday, we had a good conversation today. Dr. Dear and I spent an hour and 40 minutes with the full-time faculty, and we had a really good conversation and a chance to talk about the Cessie survey, which is an engage, a survey that we're mandated to give every three years by SUNY, that is done by students to talk about how engaged they feel they are with their academic programs, and that was a good discussion. And I think we had an adjunct startup, I think that's where Dr. Dear is, is that correct?
Running now.
Running now, so we're very happy about that. And we are ready for school starts tomorrow night?
Saturday.
Saturday.
Maybe.
Maybe. Or maybe it's no day, maybe it's no day.
Okay, any questions?
Mr. Lewis, oh, and Ms. Eckert, we're at the startup, so, you know, keep me honest here. Joanna D'Albino Portier, who is the vice chair of community colleges for SUNY, was just glowing in her comments about RCC, everyone from faculty to the students, and the students have gone on, and I was just, I was so proud to hear that. So everybody who's a part of this community, good for you, us, good for us.
And we do need to have a very brief closed session for the employment of a particular person in labor negotiations.
Okay, any questions for Cliff? All right, we skipped over the public comments section, because we didn't know if somebody wanted to speak, but Howard Shu is here, and he is the past president of the adjunct faculty. And Mr. Shu? Say a few words.
And with him is Donna Sauer, who is the secretary, vice president.
She's vice president and previous chair. Chairman Warden, Dr. Wood, members of the Board of Trustees, ladies and gentlemen. I have not spoken before you for a long time, but I feel I must appear here today to inform you of the current situation. The adjunct faculty association finds itself in. On August 31st, the college and the AFA signed two documents, one an MOA and the second a side letter. The side letter documented the percentage increase the members of our organization were to receive each year of the four years of the contract, and how the retroactive increase of the first year of the contract was to be distributed. At that time, we discussed when and how the retroactive pay was to be distributed. Why the side letter was necessary, when the MOA contained tables showing these dollar amounts that the members of the union were to receive each year. This was done at the request of the administration. After the county legislature approved the MOA in the November meeting, our president, Jerry Borghini, and I met with Dr. Davis, Joe Mara, Denise Manifold, Kathy Tompkins, and Zulma Santiago to finalize the distribution of the retroactive pay. We were told at that time that the money would be in a special paycheck distributed about December 18th. On December 28th, the last paycheck of the semester, a line appeared on the paycheck that was labeled retro. However, the only money contained on that line was the increase that was not received for the fall 2015 semester. Very few of the adjuncts received retro pay for the first year of the contract, which was 2014-15. Very few of the adjuncts received this retro pay for the first year. Dr. Davis was contacted about this error. His reply that only 17 adjuncts were eligible to receive this pay. He was informed that there were more than 300 adjuncts who should have received retro pay, and he responded that the college had paid all who were entitled, and the college had completed the retro payments. Our president, Jerry Borghini, then notified our membership in strong terms what had occurred. We were called to a meeting with Dr. Wood and Dr. Dear on January 4th. Dr. Wood was very upset about our notifying our membership in such strong terms, and that we should have called him in Beaumont before taking this action. He told us that what was done was a misunderstanding, and that he would do the right thing and pay the adjuncts what they were supposed to receive. Later that day, we received an email from Dr. Dear stating that the adjuncts would be paid on January 22nd, tomorrow. On January 11th, we received an email from Dr. Wood with a document rewriting the side letter. We reviewed the document and sent Dr. Wood an email indicating that we had issues with his document, and would like to review that with him. He informed us that we should contact Dr. Naier and work the issues with him. When we called Dr. Naier, he told us that he did not have any information on this issue, but if we sent him the changes, he would look them over and get back to us. We sent him the changes on January 13th, and have yet to hear back from him. On January 18th, we sent an email to Dr. Dear to confirm that the adjuncts would receive their pay tomorrow. Dr. Dear has replied that we will not receive this pay tomorrow, as the college has not received the signed letter agreeing to the changes. The AFA was never informed by either Dr. Wood, Dr. Dear, or anyone else on January 4th, or at any time since then, that a signed letter was required in order for our members to receive the retro pay we are entitled to. Over the past few years, we were forced to enter into legal action with Perv and to file arbitration against RCC. We have won all of these actions, which have cost the college tens of thousands of dollars in awards. This money could have been much better spent on the students. By the way, the two arbitration awards for last fall still have not been paid by the college. These are binding arbitration awards. Does the college feel they are above the contract and the law? So much for honor, integrity, and trust. I have two fears. The first is that the policies and actions of the administration are sending this college into a death spiral, and will be going in the path of Bright Cliff College. Reducing classes is followed by smaller student population, which results in fewer classes, and so on, and so on. I have a grandson who is planning to attend RCC in the fall, and I'm concerned that we will not be here long enough for him to graduate. My second fear is not retaliation. This has been done before, and is not beyond the administration to do so again. Thank you for your time and attention.
Can we keep a copy of that transcript? Thank you.
I brought extra copies.
Thank you.
If you wish, I have copies of the emails sent by Dr. Dear and Dr. Wood.
We will contact you if we need. Yeah, thank you. Sure. Any other public comments? Okay. Item number four is the consent agenda. I'll just run through this quickly, because some people may not be familiar with it. There are eight items on the agenda. The first item is the approval of the minutes, the additional seven are all resolutions. Particularly tonight, five of these resolutions were discussed at depth at our workshop meeting. There are two resolutions that were not discussed, but were emailed to the board previous to this meeting, and they were asked to comment or write if they had any questions regarding those two resolutions. So if there are any questions about those two resolutions now, maybe you can ask your questions before we move to the consent agenda. Any questions?
I'm sorry, I don't have a copy of the document.
Thank you. Okay, if there are no questions, I'll read the items on the consent agenda, and then we'll vote on them as a block. Item number one is the approval of the previous meeting minutes dated 12/16/2015. Item number two is a resolution naming opportunities for Rockland Community College Automotive Technology Center. This is resolution number one, 2016. Three is establishing the position of Associate Vice President of Resource Development and promoting Elizabeth Kendall to the position of Associate Vice President of Resource Development. This is resolution two, 2016. Number four is the approval to establish a 3D smart lab usage policy. This is resolution three, 2016. Item number five is the installation of carbon monoxide detectors, resolution number four, 2016. Item six is the construction of the Student Union Food Service Area, resolution number five, 2016. Item number seven is the revision of the 2016-2017 Academic Calendar, resolution number six, 2016. Item number eight is funding for Snap-on Equipment for Rockland Community College Automotive Technology Center, resolution number seven, 2016. Are there any questions or comments? Can I have a motion to approve? Can I have a motion to approve?
So.
Any questions? All in favor?
He'll be coming out with, I'm sorry.
Okay, motion carries.
The only change in the academic calendar, and the one that the board previously approved, is we now, trying, because we wanted to respond to the concerns of the, of our groups, is that we have now added Bethune's Day in the fall as a holiday, which means that we also at the end of the semester have to make what was a previous Tuesday, a Thursday, or some, not that we have the exact date, and the reducing one of the Jewish holidays from a day and an evening to two days and an evening to one day and an evening.
All right, I'd like to just comment on resolution number two, which is for Elizabeth Kendall's promotion. It makes me very happy, Elizabeth Kendall, I've gotten to know her work over the past couple of years, and it's incredible, the funding and grants and so forth that she's managed to obtain for Rockland Community College, and I think you should be complimented. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, and I will continue working harder than ever.
Thank you very much. Is anybody going to give the academic affairs?
Dr. Dear is, as I said, she had a adjunct, or a parent orientation and an adjunct orientation, and she's, the only thing she wanted me to do was to thank you for your patience with the calendar and the timeliness, but it did allow us to provide some positive responses. We couldn't do everything the committee asked with the calendar, and so that was her report.
Okay, any questions? Student services.
I want to start tonight by giving you an update on our enrollment statistics. Close of business yesterday, we were down 167 students versus a year ago. That is after two rounds of drop for nonpayments and our cancellation meeting. Just to briefly tell you, our cancellation meeting occurs in conjunction with academic affairs, where we review all of the courses and determine, determine whether or not they should run, the lowly enrolled courses. And that occurred on Tuesday. I'm happy to say that today, however, our staff worked diligently to provide enrollment services to 170 new and or transferring students. That does not include any students that may be continuing and or returning, so I'm fairly confident that when we look at the enrollment numbers tomorrow, we will see a great improvement to reaching our projected numbers for the spring. I do want to publicly thank, it takes really the entire college community to make the SOAR events successful, but having witnessed the awesome job and patience done today by the Office of Student Involvement, and the registrar, and the assistant registrar, and all of those who helped to advise all of those students, I really want to publicly thank them, because they really, really did an excellent job, and they're probably still working. So, that's my report, unless there are any questions on my written report.
Thank you, Ms. Zucker.
You're welcome.
Okay, finance and administration, Dr. Naier?
Yes, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As we speak, this could be the last, isn't the last meeting here, board meeting?
Maybe, maybe.
Yeah, either next month or the month after.
Okay, well, in any case, we are working with staples to convert this into office space, so that we can consolidate all accounting operations in one area. So we will see accounts payable, purchasing, and payroll, all in one place, so we are, I think we are a lot smoother operations. The second thing I wanted to report was that yesterday, with the startup, Mr. Tom Humpbank, who's the county attorney, was also there, and he mentioned that the letter of intent, which is something we need to proceed for the legislature to approve the land lease, is almost ready, and so that's a big step forward towards getting the land lease agreement to the legislature, and then talk about, really talk about the, the construction of the student housing.
And that may even be on the agenda of the meeting on February 1st, they're trying to get it to that meeting. If not, it'll be the second meeting in February.
And that's my report.
Any questions? Thank you, Dr. Deere.
Okay, sure, two, yes, two things. Ben, our secretary has sent an email to everyone regarding the day of retreat. If you have not responded to him-
Yes.
Yes, please, because as he said in an email, Joanna Duncan-Porier would very much like to be part of that retreat, and it's not that nobody here is busy, that's not at all, she's really busy. So it would be great if we could have her here, so, if you would. You received two calendars in your board packet. One is the one that Dr. Dear sent to us about the changes that are going to make, that we voted on tonight. The other one was, it says across the top, academic year 2015-2016, about board-acquired actions. I'm giving you a paper copy, okay, just so that you see that this is different from the one you voted on, okay? But you do have an electronic copy. So that we know each month what it is that we're going to be required to do, and we'll be vigilant about what it is that we need to vote on. Okay? And that is it.
All right, foundation report. I spoke with General Ann today. We are going to go over the reply that we got from the foundation, and we will, we're getting to the end, hopefully, Cliff, some, or a few items that we need to change in the MOU, and hopefully get that done within the next month. And that's it for the foundation report.
Excellent, excuse me. The, Dr. Wood, the theme that you said, is that now final?
Yes, and it's on the-
And the theme, and the theme is?
It's Rockland Community College Economic Engineering. I need to give you that specifically, so I have the invitation, it's, it's like that, it's-
Yes, the economic engine of Rockland County.
I'll give you the specific.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, Marty, just to remind, I don't know if any of you are planning to attend the alumni association's annual athletic hall thank dinner, was scheduled for this Saturday night, but because of the impending weather, it's been postponed till Friday night, January 20th. So Friday night's, and the Saturday night, if any of you are planning to attend that.
Thank you. Mason?
I just wanted to reiterate what Dr. Wood said, that the chancellor has now reached out for trustees to be appointed to these regional councils. Please, we'll talk about it at the workshop, yes? Okay, so if anybody is interested, remember that these are business-oriented, correct? Okay, so any of you who are business people, Ms. Zucker, would like to be a part of this, please consider volunteering, okay?
So did. Any questions? Student government, Karen?
Yeah, I wanted to say, I had a good time yesterday at the startup event that occurred. They did speak very highly of RCC, so I just wanted to reiterate that. And I've attended a few SOAR events, and they run really different meetings, so I just wanted to say, I've had the opportunity to put my head around a lot of different things, and see the efficiency, and you know, the way that things go. It's an opportunity that I enjoy greatly, and it sets a standard, you know, for wherever I go next, and you know, for a lot of people's day. We're having the blood drive, I believe, in March, I'll have all the dates for you, as far as the first SGA meeting, blood drive, and anything else that's going on. At our conference, we'll start back up, so we'll be able to get everything then. I think we're going to do a universal love theme, originally started out as like, I wanted a chocolate theme, just because I wanted a chocolate pop. But, and so I'm going to be two later on this quarter, and Valentine Day with us, so we agreed on that. And I know I've asked Mary Dillon to come to a meeting, and I invited you as well, and Mendel, so I'll probably reach out to each one of the board members, and to some of you guys in the audience, if both of you want to come to an SGA meeting, just to experience it, to kind of see, you know, the similarities and differences in what's being talked about, because I think it's, it's interesting, it's important to, not only build a relationship and come and see what we're doing, but just to have the experience of what actually goes on. Because I give a report about it every week, but it doesn't fully explain, you know, what actually happens in those meetings. Like I said, we have SGA in SOAR, but the events went very smoothly, and you know, we're happy to be there. And the surveys that I so often talk about have actually been completed, and have had quite a bit of free time to overbrief, so I've been using that semi-productively, and the only thing I have to make is, you're important, I have to add your name to it, to make sure they know that who you are. And instead of just giving it out, I'm going to send it out to you guys, if you guys want to add anything, or make deletions, or whatever, you know, I'll send those out to you within the next week or so, and then I can give those out right as school begins, for everyone has time, and that is the end of my report.
Okay, any questions? Okay. Cliff, you mentioned, we talked about the retreat, and the regional councils, and the change in the dinner. There's any overdue business? Nothing? Okay, then we need a, we need a motion to go into executive session.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.